And we'll go from there. Commissioner, are you good? Okay. All right, our first question coming from a well-known person, not only in the Bronx, but the Bangladeshi community. He's a community leader, Mr. Mohammed Mujumdar, Vice Chairman of Community Planning Board Nine, to start off the question for tonight. Mr. Mujumdar.
Thank you. So I'd like to start the question. Thank you. Sorry, I hope you're not deducting my time because I have one minute. So I want to start my question by saying a huge and big thanks to Commissioner O'Neill for the wonderful thing that he has been doing for the city. Because I have been living in this Bronx thirty-two years, I have never seen somebody did, I've never seen a police commissioner come here and address the people's issue, came here to dissent to us. So big thanks to you and thanks to Benjamin Carley, our CEO for this district, this precinct. Because the wonderful job he did during the Ramadan, each mark was patrolled by the police officer. I was very happy. We are one hundred percent satisfied what you have done, Benjamin. Thank you so much. That's the question. The question is, we have a huge, huge homeless shelter coming in, and we have nothing to do with that.
Remember, you got a minute.
Yes. Mayor did it, and without disregarding our opinion, community's opinion, electoral officials' opinion, this homeless shelter will host one hundred and fifty-nine single men with sex offender level one and two. My question is, what resources will you provide to Benjamin to make sure these people who committed a crime definitely, what will get in return in our community? What resources you'll get to control these people during the car field? Because this is a fundamental question for our community. I have been in the board for many, many years. Ninety-nine percent of people in opposite to this location, we are not opposite to the shelter, but we want it to be at house point. It has to be some little bit farther than in front of Sars and Sagal, marks and place of worship.
Right, I got your question.
Thank you.
All right, I got your question. So let me get this right. The question is, what are we doing about the sexual offenders in and around this area? Does that answer what the question is?
Yeah.
All right, so these are people that have gone to prison, have been sentenced, did their time, or ran out their probation, and they're now deemed sexual offenders. We have a sexual offender monitoring unit that works in our special victims division to make sure that they have to come in and regularly check in. If they don't check in, we have to come out and see it. This is what I was talking about, that this is why it takes the whole community to make sure that we stay safe. You know, there's eight-point-six billion people that live in New York City. We arrest about two-hundred thousand a year. We have to make sure that we do our best, working with you, with your help. That's how we keep people safe. And if you see anything that looks suspicious, and if you're not sure about something, this is why we have neighborhood coordination officers. This is why they all have email addresses and they all have phones. If you're feeling uncomfortable about something, you have to reach out to us and let us fully investigate it, and that's how we make you safe. This is court-ordered monitoring, so it's the responsibility NYPD to make sure that they, that we monitor them and we go out and check up on them. And they come in and they come in and sign in and we get a look at what they're doing each and every day. So, all right?
All right, thank you. Our next question is coming from Attorney Moi Chaudry, Democratic District Leader at Large, a friend of Bapa since Bapa was founded in two thousand and fifteen. Moi Chaudry.
Thank you, Sergeant Ramar Kabir. Thank you, Commissioner, all the high officials. I really thank Bapa for making the bridge between the community and the police department. They are doing a wonderful job. I thank them from bottom of my heart, and they are doing a wonderful job. Please, a round of applause for my Bapa people. My question is, since hate crimes is the biggest issue right now, so a lot of our community members are facing the, you know, becoming the victim of hate crimes. Would you please assign one of the Bangladeshi cops to the hate crime unit if you don't have one?
All right, so I don't have the answer to that question, but Mark Bolinari, the CEO of the Hate Crimes Task Force is here tonight. So there is, we want to make sure that we have, just more broadly, we want to make sure that we have a police department that represents the diversity of the city. We are a majority-minority police department. There's a lot of things in NYPD that we do well, that we do very well. There's a couple of things maybe that we don't do so well. I'm not sure everybody knows that. It's a majority-minority police department at the police officer rank. As you go up through the ranks, each and every year is getting better and better. We can't assign people of different races and ethnicities to certain neighborhoods. That's against actually equal opportunities. But in the Hate Crimes Task Force, we do get people to volunteer, and they're vetted to make sure that they're the right type of person to come there, that work hard and care about people, and they're going to do their best. So, Mark, I don't know if you want to answer that?
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner. I could just add, no, no, we do not have any Bangladeshi members right now. I would applaud somebody applying for that. We do have two Muslim members in the unit right now. We had three, one left, and we're actually looking to pick up a third. So we are a diverse group in the Hate Crime Task Force, and we try to cover as many diverse backgrounds as possible.
I can answer that a little bit, so. So this is why we have Bapa, so they can look at their membership and let them know, hey, if anybody's interested to go to hate crimes, this is what you need to do, these are the steps you need to take. So I would encourage the lieutenant to get that message out to his membership to make sure that we do have somebody and hate crimes.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Our next question is coming from Ms. Abida Kana, teacher, leader, UFT. Abida Kana.
Thank you so much, Commissioner, and thank you, Bapa, for including me in this crucial dialogue. In this current political climate, I think we all agree that it's quite evident the anti-Semitic and anti-Muslim rhetoric is quite evident and outright violence against these communities. How widely would you say do you view your role as a guardian of these communities?
I think it's, my job is very important. I have to make sure that that message gets out there every time I have the opportunity to speak. And there is no level of hate crime that is acceptable in this city. No hate crime is acceptable. So that's why we have people like Mark, that's why we have the Hate Crimes Division, that's why we have the NCOs, that's why we have the precinct commanders are all here tonight. You know, everything that you're going to say, it's good that you say it to the police commissioner. It is. It's good that I hear it. I'm out in the communities all over the city, all five boroughs, but I think it's even more important that the precinct commanders and the police officers that are up here doing this work every day, that they hear it directly from you. So at no level is it tolerated, and it's actually rises to, it's such, so important to us that if there is a possible biased crime, as a captain responds to that job to make that determination if it's a hate crime or not. So it's something that we take extremely seriously. Thank you for your question. All right?
Thank you. Our next question is coming from Mr. Salehuddin. He's the president of Parkchester Bronx Realty, Inc. Mr. Salehuddin.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Honorable Police Commissioner, Mr. James O'Neill, Inspector Mr. Benjamin Carley, and all finest NYPD officers and our community people. Thank you for doing all the hard work for New York City and our community. I have almost same type of question as Mujumdar had. We have a real problem in this area about man's shelter. We are not against the shelter, we are okay with this, but the thing is, this is a crowded neighborhood. More than forty to fifty thousand people live here. Hundred-seventy-one buildings in Parkchester complex. So our problem is our kids are going in the same block, library, pizza shop, Dollar Tree single, I mean ninety-nine cent store, they are using the area, same block. So we are concerned. Do you have any idea to relocate this location? Thank you.
To relocate the homeless shelter?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so we have, as everyone probably understands, we are a compassionate city, right? We care about other people. People aren't homeless by choice. It's not a choice. They're there because of some unfortunate turn their life has taken. I'd like to say that there's, you know, that these shelters are all over New York City. The New York City Police Department took over management of the DHS police about three years ago. So we made sure that the DHS police have sufficient training, there's enough of them, and they understand how important it is to make neighborhoods, not just the shelter itself, the neighborhoods around the shelter, make sure that people feel safe. And again, we have our NCOs. If there are issues or concerns about any particular shelter, you can let them know or you can let the precinct commanders know. There are shelters all over the city, and I understand Parkchester is a great place. As a matter of fact, my chief of department, Terry Monahan, if I'm not mistaken, he grew up in Parkchester. So we're familiar, yeah, we're familiar with the neighborhood, and you have one of, I don't really want to say this because he's got an ego, big ego already, but one of the best precinct commanders in the city is completely responsive to the people of the 4-3 precinct, Ben Gurley.
Thank you, thank you for the answer.
So Ben Gurley just thought to himself, yeah, okay, make me an inspector.
I'm sorry to ask you, because we are scared, there are convicted category one and two sex offenders. The kids are scared already. I have people, I have neighbors, they have kids going to library after school, they stay there till eight o'clock. Now they are concerned whether their kid will come back home safe. That's my question.
Yeah, no, that's, and I understand that question. And again, Ben, how many, how many cops do you have in the 4-3 precinct?
Over three hundred.
He's got over three hundred cops. It sounds like a lot of police officers. How many people live in the 4-3? Hundred-and-sixty thousand?
No, over two-hundred, over twenty-five thousand.
Okay, so why don't you talk about what you're doing in Parkchester to make sure you make people feel safe?
Well, first of all, we partner with Parkchester on everything that goes on around Parkchester. Now with the shelter, if the shelter comes, then we will police accordingly. A lot of the questions are coming based on the shelter not being here yet and saying, you know, what are you prepared to do? We will be prepared if the shelter goes up. We are forecasting what may happen based on who may be in the shelter. But we, as the police department, as I told other members of the community, we are prepared to deal with that. There are other shelters in this community that have residents that may have caused issues in the community, and we are managing that as well. Remember, we're almost four and a half square miles of precinct here with a lot of people that live here, with a lot of shelters. So we're going to manage it, we're going to deal with it. So if we have to step up the resources in which we will, if the need is there, we will sit down with the directors of the shelter, and we will go over everything from security to whatever needs are needed in the community. So if it does come, we will be prepared.
Thank you. All right, Ben, thank you. Just let me remind you, we do not target certain populations. We look to change behavior, all right? So if there are issues, then we'll deal with it, okay? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Our next question is coming from Mr. Zakaria Masood. He's the business owner and ex-president of Jackson Heights Bangladeshi Business Association. Mr. Masood.
Thank you, Commissioner. We do really appreciate that he take your effort and time to join the town hall meeting. Also, I do appreciate Bapa, where it is such a wonderful event. My question is, how can I help as a New York City resident to protect my city or neighborhood? Is there any program to join or work with New York City Police Department?
So I'm going to... Also, two-part question? Let me get the first part, okay? Otherwise, I'm going to forget the first part and only answer the second part. All right, so we have the executive officer of the Community Affairs Bureau with us tonight, Kim Royster. Kim, you want to talk about some of the programs we have?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As the Commissioner said, I'm the executive officer of the Community Affairs Bureau. Commissioner Chief Neel De Hoffman is the chief of the Community Affairs Bureau, and she's unable to be here tonight. But I'd love to answer your question. One of the things that we had mentioned very early on during the presentation is that your community council meetings are very important for you to engage in. And that's because you can actually voice your opinion about what's going on, and not only voice your opinion, hear what's going on in the community and act upon it. The second thing I would say is the build-the-block meetings that are actually held by your neighborhood coordinating officers. That's a really good avenue to talk about what you've been experiencing, some of the problems you have been experiencing, not just with crime, but other quality of life issues. And in the Community Affairs Bureau, we have our outreach unit that actually is in and about and around the city and definitely in the Bronx. And we're actually working with other agencies to determine what issues you have, what you, what needs to be solved. So that's some of the programs that we have, where you can actually have an opportunity to talk about your issues, your problems, and how you can work together with the police.
All right, you want to talk a little bit about Block Watcher? Okay.
So Block Watcher is an anonymous program where you can, it's sort of like you see something, say something, but what you can do is walk into the precinct and actually get an anonymous code to report a nine-one-one issue. So you would call nine-one-one, you would actually give your code, and you report what you're seeing. Your information is anonymous, but it allows the police to respond to that location without giving your identification and actually conduct an investigation and determine if there's an arrest that needs to be made. Okay?
Thank you, Chief. My other question was, being a minority, do you think we get fairly treated like everybody else from City of Police Commission, New York City Police Department?
What do you think my answer's going to be?
No, what is the solution?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry about that. Yeah, of course, of course. We don't, when somebody calls nine-one-one, we don't know who they are, we don't know what race they are, where they're from. We take these jobs to make a difference and to do good. Where there's thirty-six thousand cops, there's eighteen thousand civilians. I'm not going to stand up here and say each and every one of them is a wonderfully perfect human being. We're not. We're not. But by and large, the people I know, the people that I work with, that I've worked in this department for a long time, they're committed to helping everybody in this city. And if you look at where these, the crime decreases have been over the last twenty-nine years, it's been all across the city. It's been in Manhattan, it's been in Brooklyn, it's been in Staten Island, it's been in Queens, and certainly been up in the Bronx. So I think that's a great indication of how we treat people. And with all that decrease in crime, we also have a decrease in our activity. We're locking up less people, we're giving out less summonses, criminal court summonses. We're still giving out a lot of traffic tickets, so drive carefully, all right? But this is, this is without a doubt, and that's, and I have great executive staff, and I know I have certainly have great borough commanders and great precinct commanders to make sure that they're doing what the department needs to do to build trust throughout New York City.
All right, thank you. Our next question is coming from Mr. Farquhar Alam. He's the ex-General Secretary of Bangladeshi American, Bangladesh Society of USA. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Honorable Commissioner, do you think the racial makeup of a community's police department should be similar to the racial makeup of the community it serves? Or is this unnecessary? Especially, I've been a minority in this community. I got treated unfairly by police. Thank you.
Okay, I do think that you need a police department that represents the diversity of this city. So I think I've said the word trust at least half a dozen times so far since I've been up here. And that's the only way it works. You know, not every time you call nine-one-one is there a Bangladeshi police officer going to respond. That shouldn't matter. And no matter who responds to that call or if you flag down, even if you just need directions, you need to be treated fairly. And if you're not treated fairly, there's avenues there. There's the civilian complaint review board, there's the immediate supervisor, there's many things that you can do. As I said, there's fifty, I'm doing math right, up here, fifty-four thousand members in the New York City Police Department. And we're not, we're not perfect. And that's why we have civilian complaint review board, that's why we have Chief Nick Cunin's Investigations Unit. If there's things that you see that aren't right, make a complaint, so we give us an opportunity to fully investigate it. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Our next question is coming from Mr. Fahad Salaiman. He's the community leader and also founding member of Building Our Movement with Elected Members.
Thank you, Bapa. I've been attending the Bapa's meeting, town hall meeting. Thank you, Honorable Police Commissioner. Good to see you once in a year like this, face to face. So my question is, it's regarding traffic police. I know it's under your, traffic officers are under your jurisdiction, they're under you. So the question is, we see that so many times traffic police are giving tickets. Seems like they have been like in some kind of target. I just want to ask, I think they have some kind of targets that they have to fulfill that? Or they have a pressure to give a ticket for, they could be a little lenient, you know what I'm saying? But they're not. They are not, like they are in some kind of target and rush, they have to fulfill their quota.
This, this certainly not...
I'm asking you, sir.
Okay. All right, how do I respond to that? There's certainly not in quota. We're probably talking about traffic enforcement agents and police officers, because all of them hand out traffic tickets, whether it's moving violation or a parking violation. I think everybody sees for themselves each and every day what a challenge it is to manage traffic in this city.
How many do you think?
It's a difficult, difficult task. We have a three-star chief, Chief Tom Chan, who runs our transportation bureau, and he's, that's a difficult job. Fighting crime's tough, but keeping traffic moving in New York City, that's not a bigger challenge than it would challenge... And we have to give out tickets, we do. Otherwise, it would be more chaotic than you might think it is already. And especially when it comes to moving violations, it would really, it'd be irresponsible of us not to write those, you know, because what, how do people get hurt? And we've had, we have the lowest level of traffic deaths since the nineteen-tens. Last year, it was a little over two-hundred, a little over two-hundred, too many. But certainly, each and every year, it gets, it gets lower and lower. We're having some challenges this year. I think we're up about eighteen as of this morning, but hopefully as we move through the year, those numbers will come down. So now this, the police do a lot of things. You know, we fight terrorism, we fight crime, we have to make sure traffic's okay, we deal with quality of life issues. I'd like to be able to stand up here and say that we're not going to issue tickets, but you know, that's not that, a little bit?
A little bit lean.
Right, Larry, you hear that? Just a little bit, okay?
A little bit. We don't want that, we don't need to give a ticket, we accept that. A little bit lean, we got a same, my car got two tickets on the same.
All right, so we use a lot of discretion.
Same thing.
And that's one thing over the last couple of years, last four years, since the institution neighborhood policing, we want our police officers to use discretion. Not everything requires a ticket, not everything requires somebody to be arrested. And sometimes just talking to people, especially young people, is very helpful. And again, the word trust comes to mind, okay? Sorry, sorry, couldn't help you out more.
No problem.
By the way, you better move your car, otherwise it's going to get...
Thank you, Commissioner, for answering that question. And our next question is coming from Mr. Shahabuddin Shagar. He's the executive editor from Weekly Atcal.
Thank you, Police Commissioner. You know, every day happened in New York City, lots of occurrence, including robbery. So I have a question. Are you satisfied present New York City law and order situation?
I'm, 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 sorry, I didn't...
Every day happened lots of occurrence in the New York City, including robbery. So are you satisfied present law and order situation in New York City?
The level of crime?
Yes.
That's a question? What, the level of crime in New York City? No, no, absolutely, you know, I'm never going to be satisfied. But are we going to be able to get crime down to zero? I don't, I don't know. Probably not, probably not. But we're working real hard. This year so far, we're down about twenty-four hundred crimes, felony crimes. Whenever you hear about crime being up or down, you're talking about seven major crimes. It's murder, rape, robbery, felony assault, burglary, grand larceny, grand larceny auto. So so far this year for the whole city, we're down about twenty-four hundred crimes. And again, it takes a lot of work. Takes a lot of work by the police officers, they're the ones out here twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, all year long, they're missing birthday parties, they're missing anniversaries, missing holidays, but they do it because they want to do it. But it's also working with the district attorney's offices, when we do have to make arrests, we have to make sure that there's consequences there. So am I satisfied? Probably not. Is Ben satisfied? Probably not. I know Larry's not either. And we have to keep, it doesn't matter, we have to keep trying to push crime down as low as we can. And that's where everybody in this room comes in. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is coming from Mr. Abdul Chaudry. He's the CPA Dynamic Tax and Accounting. Mr. Chaudry?
Hello, Commissioner. Thank you for being here, and thank you to NYPD for keeping him safe. And also going back to the question whether we are treated fairly or not, to be honest, all of the experiences that I have when I got pulled over, if you show respect to NYPD, they respect, they show you respect back. And if you think NYPD is not respectful, just go to New Jersey and you'll see how they treat you. Also, what I want to talk about is something different compared to what's happening here. There's a new crime that's been happening recently, it's called digital crime and cyber attacks. A lot of times, the perpetrator would email you, would try to collect payments from you, or even a phone call where they will try to extort to collect X amount of money. So my question is, how, if we receive a phone call like that or an email like that, what can we do to report these guys to NYPD? Is there anything we could do to help the situation?
If you do end up, somebody does end up getting scammed, there's, of course, you'd have to file a report. I mean, this is, this is widespread. Most of the time, the phone calls aren't coming from inside the United States, which makes it a little bit more difficult. But we do a lot of outreach to make people aware of what these scams are. Kim, I'm going to come back to you again and just let us, let everybody know what we're doing as far as crime prevention.
Thank you. So very good question, because that is happening around the city. Underneath the Community Affairs Bureau is our Crime Prevention Division. And we've been looking at some of these scams that are coming through basically by an email. And as the Commissioner said, if you get an email or if you get a telephone call where you don't recognize the person, you don't identify that email address, immediately you should call the police. You should not respond to it. What's happening now is that they will email you, indicate that they're looking for some gift cards to actually be purchased. The actual email will look like it's coming from your supervisor or your boss of the company. That's what we're seeing right now. And what they'll do is ask you to go and purchase these cards and purchase them for a certain amount of money. Once you purchase the cards, what they'll do is tell you to send a specific number over. Once you send that number over, now they have your funds, and when you go and try to ask your boss or whoever sent that email about those cards, you will not get any response. So we're asking you right away, is that when you see something like this, is actually to call the police. So one of my Crime Prevention Division is doing, who's led by Jessica Corey, is we're going out into the communities and letting you know about the different scams that are taking place. The mailbox phishing, the calls that are coming over indicating that you have someone that's in the hospital or that's been abducted, these are all fake calls. And we're going out, making sure that you're aware of that. We're not only making sure that you're aware of it, but we're actually trying to tap into the different resources in the community, the faith-based organizations, the schools, partnering with our different agencies throughout the city. And we're also making sure that you know about this through television and radio. So we're taking a big stance on making sure that you're aware that you don't have to comply with these people that are trying to scam you.
And what's really helpful, I think, is to sign up for people's, we all have Twitter accounts. I have one, Community Affairs, Crime Prevention, all the precinct commanders, the housing PSA, transit districts, all have Twitter accounts. And we give out information about what's going on citywide, we also give out information about what's going on locally, and we put out crime prevention tips. And it's important that you share that with everybody in your family. If it's somebody maybe elderly or your kids, just let them know what's going on, because the scams, they constantly change. That's why we have to make sure everybody's aware of them.
Thank you, Commissioner. Our next question is coming from Ms. Sadia Chaudry. She's the director of Primary Care, St. Martin's University Hospital. She's the director of Primary Care, St. Martin's University Hospital. Sadia?
Hi, good evening, Commissioner. Thanks for being here. So we all know opioid epidemic is a hot topic across the nation now, and that's related to drug overdoses are rising. So that being said, with police officers being the first responders in scene of overdose in certain state jurisdictions, as you know, like Massachusetts, what are some initiatives and strategies NYPD is currently working on or planning to adopt for opioid epidemic?
That's a, that's a great question, thank you.
Thank you.
Because the opioid crisis is going across all of New York City, doesn't matter what religion you are, what race you are, how old you are, it's affecting all, all segments of our population. I'm not sure if the numbers for 18 are out yet, but I know in 16 and 17, about 1,600 people suffered from fatal overdoses in New York City. So this is not, this is not just a police problem. We have part of it, we have a responsibility to answer to part of that, but this is a societal problem. And I know the mayor, the mayor's got, the city hall's got a program with the Department of Health to make sure that we try to keep those fatal overdoses down to a minimum. But as a police department, there's a couple things that we do. Each and every one of our police officers carries no axon. That's, if you are suffering from an overdose, it's medication that we can give you to, to help you get out of the, get out of the overdose, and hopefully that you'll survive. There's an enforcement part of this too, though. We have a great partnership with the Drug Enforcement Administration. We have the Drug Enforcement Task Force, which is composed of DEA agents, NYPD detectives, New York State Police, and a host of other agencies, local and federal. And what they do is, they investigate narcotics on the, on the international level, the national level, the regional level. A lot of the issues now are because the heroin and other drugs being cut with fentanyl. And fentanyl is 100 times more powerful than heroin. And then if it's, if it's ingested, any, any amount, any larger amount, I guess, that's how we end up with all these fatal overdoses. So the DEA is doing their best. I know the NYPD, each borough has narcotics borough, and we have investigators that go out. And if there is an overdose, a fatal overdose, and non-fatal overdoses, we have detectives assigned to each borough, and they'll investigate that. And obviously, we're not looking to lock up the person that suffers from an overdose if it's not fatal. We're not looking to lock up the person that called 911, that was possibly doing drugs with them. We're looking to go further on, up the food chain, and get the person, person or people responsible for dealing those drugs. So there's a lot of things the NYPD are doing, and working together, we have to make sure that we do our best to make sure that those overdoses go down, the fatal overdoses. All right, thanks, that was a good question. You have a follow-up?
Thank you, Commissioner. Our next question is coming from Mr. Hassan Ali. He's a Bronx Bangladeshi community activist. Mr. Ali?
Good evening, everybody. Honorable Police Commissioner, from Baba, Shodhusodarke, I'm here to... My question is, how does the NYPD have any program to educate newly arrived immigrant families about child abuse?
That's a good, thanks, that's a great question. How does the NYPD work with newly arrived immigrant families to talk about child abuse? That's a question?
Yes, sir.
All right, Kim, I'm gonna turn to you again, all right?
So I mentioned earlier today that we had a immigrant outreach unit in the Community Affairs Bureau since 2003. And we work very closely with our domestic violence unit to talk about and discuss domestic violence. We also have two officers that are in the immigrant outreach unit that are Bangladeshi. As a matter of fact, one of my sergeants is with me here today. Sergeant? And what we do is go out into the community to discuss what does domestic violence look like? What are the different situations, and how to report it, where to report it? We also work very closely with the Neighborhood Coordination Officers, the NCOs, to actually identify if there are situations happening in the precinct. So we've been doing this for quite a while, and we've done it all around the city, and we specifically have done it in the Bronx. So we do have an immigrant outreach unit to deal specifically with those situations.
All right, our next question is coming from Mr. Shaqil Chaudry. He's the chairperson of Center for NRV, Non-Residency Bangladesh. Mr. Chaudry?
Thank you, Khomeini, Mr. Commissioner. As you know, it's about 13 million Bangladeshi origin people living worldwide, in 152 countries. It's about half a million Bangladeshi living in the United States, and a good number is living in New York. Regarding this nature of the people, Bangladeshi origin people like the Baba people, you have seen, very active, very peace-loving, do you have any plan to use these people for social awareness program like the Baba organizations, who are running by the Bangladeshi peoples, for awakening the people against the crime, social, antisocial activities, or promoting the activities which will give the best result to the community? Thank you.
Of course I have plans. It wouldn't be a good Police Commissioner if I didn't have plans. Now, let's, not to make light, that was, that was a good question. There are, there are plenty of plans to make sure that anybody that wants to help keep the community safe has that opportunity. I think our best bet, and I've been holding community meetings in nine of the precincts where the violent crime rate is double the citywide average, the common theme that comes up is things to do for young people, programs for young people, to make them feel safe, to give them something to do between that time they get out of school and when they come home. And that's a common theme in Brooklyn, as it is in the Bronx. And we've held meetings in the 42, the 41, the 44, and the 40. So I think that's a big part of it, to make sure that we have enough community-based organizations, to make sure that there's enough other agencies that have programs for our kids to keep them out of trouble. Because it's, it's hard being a teenager, and it's definitely hard being a teenager when you're not from, when you're not from the United States. Right back. We have programs within a police department to do that, but I won't make Kim speak again, but I'll talk, there's the Youth Police Academy, there's the Explorer Program, another, a number of other things that we can do for young people. And as far as, as adults, come to the community council meetings, come to the NCO safety summit meetings that they hold four times a year. Now, show your presence, show that you care about this neighborhood. And it's important, the NCOs, they conduct these meetings, the cops do it, it's not the sergeants, it's not the lieutenants, certainly not the commissioner that does that. And if you go on our website, you put in your address, and you'll see what sector you live in, and when those safety summit meetings are being held, and show up. And I think that's a big part of us moving forward, so there's a lot people can do to help keep their city safe.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Next question is coming from Ms. Mazid Aoudi, she's a community activist.
Hi, how are you? I'm a New York City Campaign, I am a New York City Campaign Finance Back member, I represent 4.82 million voter, registered voter, 2% of the population, South Eastern I represent. Thank you for organizing Baba to such a wonderful event. I think we need to be expanding, developing, step by step, and I really appreciate that they are promote and progressive movement. Thank you, Honorable Commissioner. I have one question. Recently, there is a terrorism student, one of the 22 years old, I know this is for our issue. There is a sting operation, ruled convinced to clear this kind of arrest. What is, what there should be a fear type on these students, can prevent this kind of counseling, or any other program can prevent this kind of situation?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I'm familiar with the case that you're talking about, Mark? Yep? What, somebody was arrested? A young person was arrested?
Ashikul Alan was arrested, two second, one of the students.
Mr. Alan?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Alan, okay, I got that, I got that. So this is, this is an investigation that was done jointly with the FBI and the Intelligence Bureau, the NYPD Intelligence Bureau. I don't know if you saw the criminal complaint from the Southern District of New York, US Attorney's Office, it's pretty serious. The charge is against him, if you go online, you can read it, and, and he's got a lawyer who's gonna be represented to make sure that, as we go through this process, that he's treated fairly. But this is, this is how we keep the city safe. And we have to make, we have to realize that there are people out there looking to do us harm. And it's not any particular group, it runs across the gamut, who's looking to do New York City harm. So he was, he was arrested, there was probable cause, now it's gonna be brought before the federal court system, and we'll see where the case ends up.
Sad, if you have created some kind of counseling program, or some kind of...
Okay, so, so this doesn't happen? Yeah, this is, this, that, and that's it, that is an absolutely great point. So it doesn't get to this point. And this is why it's so important that we have opportunities for our young people. So if they are exposed to messaging that's bad, that they are exposed to this type of thing on the internet, just get counter narrative, about how good this, this country is, how good this city is, how good life is, and that should be celebrated. So we're working, we're actually working with some of our, with some of the social media companies, that if somebody puts in a search that might not, they think might not be decent results, the counter narrative comes up about what actually happens, if you're gonna decide to go over overseas and fight, what the reality of that is. So this counter narrative is important that we put out there. But this is what I was talking about, having programs for young people, to make sure that they see that there's so much more to life, and that this is, this is a great country, and we should all work together to make sure life gets even better. All right? Thank you, thanks for that question.
Our next question is coming from Taznia Chaudry. She's a student of Bronx Science High School, she's right in the hallway. Taznia?
Hi, thank you for coming tonight. So I know you just addressed some of the initiatives NYPD has taken to like, help New York City, but my question is specifically targeting like drug usage, so what plans do you, what policies do you plan to implement in New York City high schools to reduce the drug usage?
That's another great question. I'm not sure if that's specifically something direct, that should be directed at the NYPD. I mean, we, we have a presence in the schools, we have our Neighborhood Coordination Officers that go in there, interact with the students. We do have policies in certain communities around the city, it's an anti-drug message, but the schools have a big responsibility in that fact to enact, to, a big responsibility to make sure that they get that message out there. We're, we're trying to, it does take money to put police officers in schools to get these messages out there. We're trying to increase the number of students that we interact with each and every day. But again, it's gotta be everybody, certainly not just the police department. And what do they do at Bronx High School of Science? Do they do anything? All right, see, I got a question for you now.
I mean, our faculty actually like presses hard, like down on the students, we actually like had an undercover cop recently to come in and address the issue, so yeah.
Okay, does, does the faculty, the women and teachers take that on directly?
Yeah.
And talk to the students about drug use?
Yeah, so we have deans for each grade, and they all send that message along strongly, so yeah.
Okay, I don't know, I don't think you have NCOs from the 52 here, but I'm sure they'd be really interested in coming to Bronx High School of Science and talking about it. Thanks for your question, right? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll request everybody to keep your questions short and to point, please. Now, next question is coming from Mr. Mushtaq Chaudry. He's the director of 40th Last Financial.
Thank you, Commissioner. My question is not based on Bronx solely, it's based on the five boroughs that if you look into the domestic violence is rising right now. So my question is, as a community member, what type of support can we expect from NYPD that's gonna help us with the resources, that will help us and plus the community to take a step where we can reduce the domestic violence as a whole, as a community and also from, and also support from NYPD as well?
Yeah, so that's, that is a great question. Each and every precinct and housing, police service areas, those are the police precincts that cover housing, they have domestic violence units, they have a sergeant and a number of police officers. They also have people assigned to the detective squads that handle domestic violence complaints. But we really don't want it to get to that point. We don't want it to get to the point where we have to arrest people for DV, we want it to be preventive. If something does happen, and we do have advocates in, in working in the precincts that deal with the victims, to make sure that they can, it can help go through the process and understand what their rights are, and how we can keep them safe. We do go out and do visits, if there's a history, if there's a domestic incident report, we call them DIRs, and there's a number of them, our police officers will go out and proactively visit that household, to make sure that people feel safe, and to make sure people are aware of the resources, the counseling resources available to them, to make sure that we keep them as safe as possible. But again, if, you know, if you live somewhere and you think there's domestic violence going on, it takes all of us, you know, you have to make sure people know about that, you have to let people know about it, so give us a chance to fully investigate. It is an issue, it's an issue that, that we take on, and so important for us that we have a domestic violence unit assigned to the chief department's office. And we review cases each and every week, so thank you for that question.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next question is coming from Mr. Mohammed Alaa. He's the director of Borough Mahay Community College. Mr. Alaa?
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioner Ali. Friday is a special day for Muslims, we gather in the mosque to pray. My question is, will the NYPD consider assigning more uniformed officers in these mosques so that people feel safer?
Yeah, so after the tragedy in New Zealand, that very afternoon, we had all of our NCOs, community affairs officers, reach out and contact every mosque in the city. It's important that we did that, because while there was no direct or credible threat against any houses of worship in New York City at the time, sometimes there's a slight difference between keeping people safe and making them feel safe. To be able to assign a police officer to each and every house of worship in New York City would be an impossibility. That's why we have the Neighborhood Policing Program, that's why we have NCOs. And in special times of year, each precinct puts out a house of worship card, where they go around from each, to each house of worship, stay in contact with them, to make sure that people know that they're out there doing their best to keep people safe. And again, if you see something that doesn't look right, this is why we have to continue to build trust, you have to feel comfortable to come to us, to give us the opportunity to investigate and keep you safe.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Next question is coming from Mr. Shahed Alaa. He's a journalist and YouTube blogger. Mr. Alaa?
Hi, Commissioner, thank you. Sir, a real thanks from heart for serving us every day. As a New American, I do feel every day that how lucky I am. No, in the last three years, I never stopped by any police for any purposes. The country where I live, Bangladesh, where we live, the situation is not the same. My question is, the recent problem, sometimes we get shocked from our community people. Mr. Mrs. Mazidah raised the issue, Mr. Ashik, we all condemned that, and we don't want to hear such news in future. It's a two-way process. Do you think that as a community, we have something to do to stop this type of news, to prevent this news? And from you, this, the trap used by FBI is not mostly welcome by the community people. So is there any other way to, I mean, find out the issue, stop those?
So is the question, are you questioning the way? All right, I'm gonna ask, answer the second part first.
Yeah.
Are you, are you asking if the FBI conducts their investigations properly? Is that what you're asking?
No, I'm asking that, that method, the...
The methodology? The methodology that they use? So when we're involved, and especially when it's the Joint Terrorist Task Force, if we're doing an investigation, it's based on leads. And we don't do it randomly. And it's actually, it's called the Hanchu Rule League, that anytime we do any investigation, we have civilian oversight. We have to bring it to them, and they have to make sure that we're following the right procedures. I know the FBI gets beat up a lot, especially on the national level. But I will tell you, right here, right now, the relationship that we have with the New York City FBI office couldn't be better. The men and women that work in that office are fully committed to keeping everybody in this city safe from traditional crime and also from terrorism. And we work with them every day. And if I didn't think they were doing that, I wouldn't be saying.
As we own this community, we don't deny that he's on our path. So we don't want to see any incidents in... Do you think that we do have something to do? Do you have any suggestions to us to prevent this type of incidents?
To prevent what type of incidents?
I mean, that no more Ashikul comes out from society, Ashikul Alum.
Commissioner, he's basically asking about the terrorists that...
Yeah, there is. There absolutely is.
He's asking the...
Is there anything the community can do to help prevent that? Yeah, and I think this community does that. You have to pay attention to everything that goes on around you. You have to pay attention to, and I'm not talking about spouting at anybody, but if something out there doesn't look right, it makes you feel uncomfortable, you have to come to us, come to the NCOs, dial 911, give us a chance to investigate. But you also have to make sure that you pay attention to what your children are doing and what they're involved in. There's a lot, so many times, they're very young people. You know, you have to, I know it's the United States of America, but you have to, I have, my boys are thirty and twenty-six, they're a little older. And when they were young, I wanted to know everything that they were doing. You know, it's, I'm raising you, I'm responsible for you. And I'm sure everybody in this room does that. But I think if we all did that, I think it'd be a much safer New York City.
Thank you. Our next question is coming from Mr. Abdul Chowdhury. He's the owner of Stalin Pharmacy in Bronx. Mr. Chowdhury?
How you doing? Thank you for coming. This is a great honor for us. I also want to thank the Fortis precinct CEO and Borough Chief, Mr. McKune, and 52nd Captain, Mr. Petty. And also I want to thank Mr. Eric Fernandez for always helping us out, and so on and so forth. So I grew up here, twenty-five years, in the Bronx, schools around here. For over the last twenty-five years, the community has done very well. Real estate and the schools has done much better and so on. I just want to reiterate our concern about the single man homeless shelter again one more time. I know it's not coming from you. The reason for the concern again is that this is Single Man Center, Level One, Level Two, but in the middle of a couple of schools, two churches. And the concern is because hundred sixty-five men, and they just came out of jail and so on and so forth. The schools, the girls, the boys, they're gonna be around. That's our main point for the concerns. And we are raising our voice to various authorities and officers, such as you. But we feel like we're not being heard properly, and we've been doing that for about a year or so now. So if there's something that you can do, we'd really appreciate that. On that end, that is, as a purchaser, resident, purchaser, business owner, I work with the underserved neighborhoods and the schools and the kids and so on and so forth. So this is something that's coming out every time, so I just want to make you aware of that. And the second thing is, one of the questions I was asked to ask is, to be effective, law enforcement agencies must constantly adapt to the changing nature of crime and the way criminals behave. In your opinion, what is the biggest issue facing law enforcement today?
That's a billion-dollar question. What's the biggest issue facing law enforcement today? I think in New York City, which I can speak about, I think it's making sure we build trust with all eight point six billion New Yorkers. You know, there are many things that concern me. Traditional crime concerns me, of course, especially violence, homicides, and shootings. Quality of life is a great concern to me. Terrorism is a great concern to me. But the only way that we tackle all those problems is to make sure that we're all working together. That you understand that the police, why we take these jobs, and I talked about that before. And it's up to us to make sure that we continue to build trust over time. So I think there's many things that concern me. There are many issues. Cybercrime, I'm particularly concerned about. Kim Royce spoke about some of the scams out there. And that we have to adapt. We have to make sure that we have a community that's not only diverse as far as race, ethnicity, religion. We also have to make sure that we have some of the best and brightest that become police officers that help us fight these problems as they evolve. And it's important, the cybercrime is really particularly concerning to me. People are losing money, and obviously, we have to do our best to make sure that we can mitigate that in some way. And again, the FBI is a big help with that, too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Our last question, actually. It's coming from Mr. Abdul Sahid. He's the president of American Bangladeshi Welfare Organization. Mr. Sahid?
Thank you, Commissioner, for giving us time to come here tonight. Also, thank you...
Can you hold on one second? Can you keep that a little bit? Thank you. I know we've been at this for a little while, but we have to show respect, right?
Thank you, Commissioner, to come here tonight, to give us that time. And also thank you, Bapa, for having such a wonderfulcoming meeting in the Bronx. My question is, we have pulled the mantra of Maha last month. Really, we are really appreciative. First of all, Larry Dicko, our Borough Chief, and our guardian, Benjamin Guardian, did so wonderful job for our all over the mosque. And also, when I need something, I text them, the only response. And also our Community Affairs Officer, John and Eric Fernandez. My question is, our purchase of a church in the Bronx, first church in the Bronx, we built up thirty-two years ago. And now our mosque is at least every Friday gathering fifteen hundred people in the gathering of mosques. My question, they have did wonderful job, Benjamin Guardian, no question about it. But I requested you, can you provide armed force in the mosque every Friday?
Can we provide, send somebody to your mosque every Friday?
Armed force, yeah.
Armed support? People with long guns?
Yes.
How many mosques are there in New York City?
I know in the Bronx, by all of New York City, but Bronx, at least, we have at least thirty-five mosques in the Bronx. But first mosque...
Yeah, multiply that by at least five. So here, here... I'm gonna make you a deal there, okay? So we have a unit that's called the Critical Response Command. What they do is, it's a group of five hundred cops, five hundred and fifty police officers. And we assign them to sensitive locations, high-profile locations throughout the city. And when the attack happened in New Zealand, we did send them to mosques all around the city. So we can work with Inspector Gurley and Chief Cunin to see if we can get CRC up here. Maybe not on every Friday, but we'll try to get them up here as often as possible to make everybody in that mosque feel safe. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. You did wonderful job. Thank you. Thank you.
I think I have to share that. Good evening, and my name is Mohammed Rahman. Thank you, Bapa, for tonight, such a nice evening. And thank you, Sarabai, and George, please, for inviting me here. I wanna share something, but I wouldn't be that much like, I'm sorry, he is actually doing a great job. I moved to the United States from London. So everyone actually expressed their frustration about the ticketing, right? The police officer, they put them over and giving so many tickets. I am the only person in this hall, three policemen chased me and pulled me over, and then they gave me a ticket. Then they gave me a ticket. Because, because I actually took a... No, because why I have to say that? Because so much professionalism, it touched my heart. When I landed in the United States, I live in New Jersey, I came to New York City to show my wife, because to show pity, because I come from UK. So what happened, just what happened? I took a right turn on red light, three occasions.
Yeah, that's...
Yes, but they pulled me over because I didn't know that, because I'm New Jersey, you can tell that. But they pulled me over, then they gave me the ticket. They showed so much professionalism, they touched my heart. That's why I wanted to share. Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, I would like to request our Council General, Sadiya Fajiness, to speak on the Bangladeshi community. Can you see, please? Can you see?